Same thing I have. Okay, good evening. We're going to begin a recording of our regular monthly meeting.
Yes.
With a corn being present, the meeting was called to order at 6:30 PM tonight. We immediately convened an executive session to discuss the employment history of matters leading to the appointment, or appointment and employment of particular persons in collective negotiations and management confidential staff. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, second, to end the executive session and return to the opening.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mitchell, second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carried. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to your Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ballroom? Ms. Graves? Ms. Graves, here. Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Thurber?
Here.
Mr. Webber and Arrow?
Here.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda?
With the addenda.
Motion. Motion, Ms. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mr. Hamilton, all in favor? Aye. No one opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes of September thirteenth for this meeting is written and corrected, including a change in Amanda King's effective date from eight thirty-one to nine-nine. Motion? Motion, Ms. Graves, second, Mr. Thurber, all in favor? Aye. No one opposed? Motion carried. Recognition of Lowe's for their recent donation of the bottled water to help us out with what our main grade, also the water pressure, the boil water order. We think that definitely the donation was greatly appreciated. And then, do you want it to be?
Sure. Acknowledge the Board of Education members for their dedication to our children learning in the community and their devotion to many hours of service in the elementary and secondary hour of education as they continue to strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. Our Board of Editors respond to the educational needs of our community and in doing so, help strengthen the New York State's educational system and improve the future prospects for our children. This year, October seventeenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, is recognition of school board members. So, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. In addition to this meeting and the preparation for this meeting, we do attend some webinars. I attended a webinar on foreign officers. And Mr. Webber just attended the. Ms. what? Yeah. And we're getting information back from that. He gave us a summary too. So, we do try to put in all those other little pieces that help us with what we're doing here at Peru District. But I also want to recognize not only, you know, the Board of Education, the support that I get with the membership, but also recently, our students and the athletic events. I mean, wow. I've been to a number of them and just everything that's going on. And right now, it's into the sexual pieces and so on. But it's fantastic. Right now on campus?
Yes, right now on campus.
If, and I don't know if that was the right time, but I happened to notice we have a young woman who was asked to, and as a freshman, to play on the varsity boys' football team. She happens to be my neighbor, and I can tell you from being in that position that she is an absolute athlete. I mean, my son, she's my son's age, and they would, he'd go over to their house to play when they were younger, and half the time, he'd come back bleeding. But not because she beat him up, but because, because he's just trying to keep up with her, right? So, she's an, she's an athlete. I, I think the thing that I've been most impressed about is a couple things. One is, in the paper, the first time this was reported on, this is like ten days ago, she said that everybody's been very welcoming. And then, the coach, and that's a quote, and then, the coach was, had also said that, you know, having Maggie on the team is, having this person on the team is.
As students, okay.
The students, okay.
We'll have to be careful of names.
That she's another weapon on this team, which, if you think about the mindset shift over the last three to five years, this type of transition, I don't think would have been as smooth just in society, not that long ago. And so, that points to a couple other things for me, which is, one, that's an exemplary job by the boys on the team and the staff and the entire program. But, two, I think our staff has probably, over years, maybe decades, kept encouraging people when they'd say something inappropriate to correct their behavior, correct that statement, and maybe sometimes, it doesn't feel like it's getting through. But I do think this is one of those times where it has. And it's just an example of that. And so, I'm hoping, you know, Mr. Storm, you'd at least pass along that sentiment in some way.
For sure.
To that program, not because it gets us more points and not because it happens to be a female on a male team. And make no mistake, it's not charity. She's legitimately, there are no doubters every time she kicks the ball. But because somebody like my daughter looks up to her and is, has been impressed by that, and has been absolutely enamored with that effort, only because, you know, and my daughter's mindset, but of course, you know, girls can play on a boys' team is her mindset, and this just reinforces that. So, this is, to me, the Peru that I want my daughter to grow up in. And equally as importantly, it's the Peru I want my son to grow up in, where these boys and this team has been welcoming and in a way, it's been no big deal. And I think for the rest of us, we should want to recognize that as a big deal. So, if you don't mind passing on at least that recognition.
I appreciate that.
I'd appreciate it.
I think, too, in the past, we've kind of addressed them, right? You know, it's phenomenal. You know, there's that diversity at P P's that we really support too. And this is just another prime example of it.
Sitting in the stands on Friday night, I was very focused on listening to other families and other people in the stands. And one hundred percent, everybody was really glad for this opportunity. Again, I think that's the work of our staff for a long period of time, along with all the societal changes that have really been happening. And I think this is an example of that, and I was just really proud of it.
Thank you. Let's see, public comment. I don't think we had anybody over there, and we didn't have any public comments coming through with emails. Thank you.
All right. So, we definitely, we're in month two, and things are going well. And I will, I'd like to jump onto what Mr. Peters was saying. I do think that, you know, after, after the pandemic and after, you know, coming back, we definitely can see where, where classroom management, it's one of those things where, as teachers, we always learned that you needed to do those things in the first couple of weeks of school. Couple of weeks has gone a little bit further, but I will commend our teachers for the work that they've been doing to really help students get back to school. And you see that, and give an example of one that was pretty impressive. A teacher was walking the students down the hallway in the elementary school, and, and, "What's this?" And I was watching it, and really, what it was, is the teacher was ringing the bell as a reminder, just a very subtle, very subtle movement of the bell in an effort to, it was a three-strikes, it was a morning time, but they, "We're, we're doing a good job," or, "Oop, kind of messing up right now." Just showing them how we move throughout the building to show respect to the other people that are in the building trying to learn when you're walking down the hall. It was just a creative way, and the kids were doing a great job. So, that's just a prime example of some of the work that's being done. Quite often, you'll see teachers just having a conversation with students in the hallway. You know, instead of calling a student out in front of everyone, you'll see someone walk to their door, just outside the door, and have finished that conversation. So, a lot of that's going on. So, it's that if you want to teach it, so I think our teachers are doing a phenomenal job with that, and so, it's important. You know, and as everyone, everybody knows, we, as a school district, have to always look at spaces and looking at where we are with our, our school and with, we had to move people around last year and that, you know, at the end of the school year and into the school year. Our teachers have done a great job recreating spaces and being ready for this school year. And it's always important for us, I think, to be looking at, at the, the actual plant itself, the, the school, to determine, do we have the actual space that we need? And do we even have any ability to change any of that in the future? So, two, two studies that are underway, we're, we're working right now with the architects, and they're going to be doing an overall analysis of our, our learning spaces. And then, in addition to learning spaces that way, we're going to be looking at enrollment, because those two things are critical together. So, in the future, when we're making the, when decisions are being made, we're going to have that data. It was interesting, because I just got the preliminary, just literally by the end of today, a report on enrollment, and I'll be talking more about that in the future. But those two, those two reports together are going to give the Board of Education and our district a little bit of insight in regards to where we are with these sorts of things. So, we're off to a good start, and I hope everyone enjoyed the first round of newsletters by our principals. They were, did a phenomenal job working as a team, getting it all out to everybody at the same time. And it was, it was pretty nice to see that. And I have another one coming up this, I guess, this week from our supervisors. So, supervisors do a joint one, they'll do it three times a year. So, that'll be, we have two principals do it once a month. So, I think that that really helps.
I like that. I sent a message because I really like the format always, and consistency is, is a big key piece.
All right. So, that's, that's the report.
Okay. We're supposed to get two jobs.
Good evening. Not a lot to report tonight. Like Mr. Storm said, our members are busy working around campus, establishing routines, schedules. I think seem to be going pretty well with the students. Some minor glitches with some dismissal on the elementary side of campus, but that's definitely something that we've been working on, and it gets better. Copiers are another thing. Darn copiers, back orders, but hopefully, they'll get here soon. It's just another thing that we're trying to work out and do the best that we can. But it is becoming an issue for some. So, but we appreciate the open communication with Mr. Storm, seeing him in the hall, having our liaison meetings, having him stop in if he hears something. That, that just, that works well for everyone when you can, when you can have that open road policy. And last but not least, in honor of Board of Education Week, we appreciate your service and your time and your dedication to helping our school the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. It can't be better without all of us. Thank you. Okay, administrative reports.
Yes, this is like going to be your favorite report of the year. Maybe not. I don't mean that to diminish the work that anyone does.
Wow. There, there's the French.
Mrs. Reeves is going to introduce someone today.
Yes.
As possible for the future.
I'm very pleased to introduce Mrs. Kelly Porter. She's one of our middle and high school psychologists. She's been practicing as a school psychologist for six years, two of them here, the last two here at Peru. She works very closely with our administrators every single day. We're very, very grateful to have her. She does amazing work. And her guest here is Dugan. Dugan is a two-year-old husky Great Pyruas mix. And I'll let her take it from you.
Good evening. I submitted my proposal. I submitted it to Mr. Storm's a few weeks ago, and the copy of we went out to all of you about a week and a half, two weeks ago. So, today, for me, is really just to introduce Dugan to you, introduce myself to you, answer any questions that you might have. I don't want to repeat all of the things that you've been reading, but in a nutshell, I am, I am and have always been passionate about dogs. I've been working with dogs more professionally since about two thousand and three, I started showing dogs. I had a breeding program, and I own my own kennel for several years. We took our, our dogs around the eastern coast and up into Canada. I had both Canadian and American champion dogs. And then, we got into competition obedience, and we started into agility. So, I've, I've been working with dogs for many, many years. Dugan is hands down the smartest dog I've ever owned. And that's, that's not me, like, just plugging him for this. Like, he really is ideal for this position. His temperament is just perfect. He's, he's just easy and smart and a people pleaser. He's very, very good with children. I had him at the Fourth of July downtown Plasberg, just to be around all of the noise, to see what his reaction was. This is what he did the whole time. He laid on the, on the road when the parade was going by, and then, we went to some restaurants. You can see that he's very mellow, very relaxed. As a psychologist, I am very excited about the idea of bringing Dugan and in the future, possibly other dogs, to help facilitate with the counseling. The research is there. It shows that it helps with anxiety. It even helps with reading programs. Kids are more apt to be relaxed and approach reading in a different way. It's, it's mostly about the reducing of stress, shyness. The papers that I submitted to you have all this information in it. So, I'm just, I'm super excited. I, I worked at Beaman Town for a couple of years, doing my practicum and my internship there. So, I'm familiar with their dog program. It's super successful. They actually just brought in another dog, I believe. Now, they have a total of five coming in. And I spoke with a woman who worked there just before coming here. Would you like to pet him?
I'll say that we've been asking for a therapy cat in the district office for years. We've had to run it up many times.
So, Kelly, when you were, when you were, you had this, you had the experience, what are some of the thoughts?
I was surprised.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
What was the question?
What, what have you heard or told in your, you worked in Beaman Town, doing your practicum, or became a guru? What were some of the things that you witnessed with the students that were participating with the project?
So, I personally did not witness it, but I did work with Christine Tedford, who was at Cumberland Head and does work with the dogs daily. And I've talked to her frequently about how, how it works. And I also spoke unknowingly to one of the board members at Lowe's one time. He saw the dog, and we started talking, and he said, "My school uses this in our, their..." The anxiety with children has gone down. The referrals have gone down. The level of prices and number of prices have gone down. They've seen their numbers drop drastically, which is why they're continuing to really promote this and add to the program. My understanding is that they're trying to expand from Cumberland Head over to the main building and into the middle high school as well. They have two great names now, and there were a couple of pictures of the other dogs.
Yeah.
I did speak with him, he had some about it. He said that it's very successful. It's amazing to actually see the dogs and the students interact together. He said, "It's just amazing."
Yeah, I'm very excited to watch.
I think it's great. I've been able to canine handle for eight years.
Nice.
My first career. My question to you is, as far as your psychologist group in the school district, has this dog been through any kind of aggression? Because it's basically based on a pack theory. So, if you had a student that was in crisis, and that student struck you in presence of that dog, what's, how's this dog's going to react to you? And how do you test that?
So, we have gone through three levels of obedience. He started puppy, intermediate, and advanced, and he's gone through therapy dog training. He just took his test last Thursday for the therapy dog training. They look at all different things, including throwing objects that were made out of tin at hard floors, walking with big brimmed hats and coats, and staggering near the dog. We had to walk around other people with dogs to see if he would show interest. We walked around strangers. We walked around carts, different types of machinery, the ones that beef when they back up. And he had no marks off. He did wonderfully with all of those distractions.
Because he's going through a test where somebody's attacked you personally, is your personal block?
To my understanding of that test, I don't know of that test.
Because I just know, I just know as a handler myself, as a packer for canines, you're the leader of the pack. You're going to protect that pack. So, if a child is out of control, and that child strikes, is this dog going to let that student? That's what I want to know.
So, I cannot predict the future, but what I can tell you about what I know about his demeanor is that, and about my preventative measures, is that I have worked with Bernadette Nolan, the other school psychologist in my suite, who also has a golden doodle. And I've also talked with Mrs. Arnold, Karen Arnold, who also has a golden doodle. They both are very interested in the training. So, we, what our job is to, we're going to work together and create plans for, for those events. When we have a crisis, how are we going to deal with it? How are we going to get in touch with each other? And they have both, and I've also spoken with Mrs. Reeves, who is also on board with being a handler, so that if a crisis does ensue, we will have a protocol put in place to deal with that.
I'm just thinking, as a board member, particularly the liability down the road, something should happen. Two, the dog is now, obviously, not tested in this situation, from what you're saying to me, as it has been.
Not an aggressive situation.
Not an aggressive situation. I know personally, that the dog part, in the back, is it can protect the leader of the pack. I got a hundred and ten pound lab at home. If somebody were to come to my house, grab me, they're going to get bit. A lab is just like your lab. They'll sit there and scratch your body, but part of those, part of their instinct is to protect the pack. That's you. You're in a position as a psychologist, when you deal with children, obviously, in crisis on a daily basis. I was concerned that if you're walking down the hallway with a dog, a student's in crisis, a student comes at you, what is that dog going to do?
So, first of all, he is a therapy dog, which means that the time that he's going to be around kids will be when we're in quiet mode. He's going to be with me when we're talking or walking outside. He will not be joining me during crisis. If there is a call for crisis, that's where the protocol comes in, and I work with Mrs. Nolan and hand him to her, and then, I deal with the crisis myself if it's one of my kiddos. I am now, now that he passed his test last Thursday, I'm now involved with the organization Love on a Leash, and that opens a lot of doors going further for him to become a facility dog. The facility dog level is the level that you're speaking of, where he is brought into a crisis, where he is trained to position his body in a way that is not aggressive to the child, where he is helping to, you know, calm the child and at the same time, keep him, you know, contained. They're also trained to recognize seizures, diabetes, like, there's different levels. That's coming, and he will not be engaging in any of those types of scenarios until he's fully trained for that.
So, in your office, he's going to be in the kennel if there's a student in your office in crisis? I'm just, I'm just trying to think of all the scenarios here where students are going to say, if you're going to say, the program is going to be safe. I think it's an awesome program.
Right.
But I'm looking at, as a district liability down the road, if something should happen.
No, no.
If he's going to protect you because he thinks you're a big threat. And if the dog hasn't been tested, then that's, that's a concern.
I absolutely hear you, and, and I will have those answers in time. I can tell you that we're at the jump-off point, and my goal right now is to have him minimally in school, if this is approved, to have him minimally in school while we continue the training, while we set up these protocols, and to make sure that myself and our kids are all safe. I know that these questions are addressed at Beaman Town, and Gilderlin is the woman that I've been speaking with. They have several dogs down there in their dog program, and I can get those answers to you very soon, but I know that they are addressed in school districts, obviously, for safety. Thank you.
I know that there was a permission piece in there with the students and so on. Do we have any students, maybe Shan, I can answer this with the health part, at the principals, students who are allergic to dogs? Permission didn't say anything about that, but I was just curious about how we go about addressing students who might be allergic to.
So, to jump in on that aspect of it, we definitely can probably go in, take an absolute thorough look into that. We have had therapy dogs come in.
Right, right.
From the outside for a period, like, for a.
Reading session.
Or coming into our, you know, our special education program for maybe forty minutes at a time, an hour at a time. And has, there was, at the time, when I was the principal of the middle school, there was not a student in the middle school that had a specific dog allergy at the time. That was reported.
Right.
A reported allergy.
Okay, that's all I was trying to think of.
Yeah.
I know that we're looking at the health report that you give us every month. There's so many different bases on there.
I think that what we can do too, and we talked about protocols, and that, you know, kind of brings up a good point. If we do go down this, this road, we can definitely establish some additional protocols that would address that as well, which would be the, which would be that piece in regards to, in the particular building that we start this with, if that's where we go, the actual, knowing who those students are, if that, if that is the work of the nurses in there.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, the letter that I had created to send home to parents can be revised to ask specifically if there are any allergies or fears to dogs. And since I wrote that letter, I've been talking more and more. Like I said, when I finished with the testing, it kind of opened up a bunch of doors, and it, I, it was like a list of people to get in touch with, to ask questions, people that work in hospitals and the schools. And I'm getting answers to a lot of questions that I've been seeking. And one of them is about the allergies. The allergy is actually to protein on skin and saliva from dogs, not the hair. So, it would be relatively easy to keep a child that was allergic away from him specifically and just, you know, make sure that the room is vacuumed.
Any other questions? We didn't have action on this, do we?
Right, it was more of a presentation.
Okay.
I think we were trying to just get a feeling of how the board.
Sure.
If the board wants more information and to move forward in another, how through two, or actually.
Right, we've got a couple of questions that you'll find some information for us.
I'll reach out to you, to, I'll reach out to you on Thursday.
I've watched one in the action, you know, when I was an interim principal, and it's just amazing. I'm very excited. I think it's a huge asset to schools, especially after COVID, with kids being stressed and. Well, Abishan, I was there, Abishan cats.
I think.
I think a school.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, we have thirteen, A through H. We have a motion. Motion, Ms. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters, and any discussion on any, any questions on anything? In all favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carried. And fourteen, we have A through J, but we have to remove C, F, and J. Right?
Yes.
C, F, and J. We have a motion. Motion, Ms. Mitchell? Like, Mr. Thurber, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carry it. And now, fifteen, and fifteen. Hold on. Fifteen is a change in K, revise K for separation, and we're going to add L and R. Yep, and it goes to Q R, so now it's pointing to R.
Okay.
And have a motion.
Move.
Motion, Ms. Graves, second. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any discussion? All favor? No one opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, um, move on to sixteen. By sixteen, we should take, take a look at.
H one seven.
H one seven. A, the topic of district goals.
Aye.
I think we've got some specifics in here now. It's broad, huh? And then, you'll have, these are the operations, you'll have some very specifics of the principals who are carrying out the how-to's.
You know, one of the things I think is really important about the district goals, I think everyone recognizes that the district goals are not necessarily, I think, a strategic, the process of our strategic planning. And it's not because it's had a possibility of being a strategic planning individual. And it's not because it's had a possibility we could, the strategic planning individual retired, and we're gonna need, we're gonna need to work with these goals and incorporate that into our strategic plan. I did reach out to C B E S, they do have an individual that they're working with right now that does strategic planning, and I will work with P T and with our, and administration in regards to those, how we can use what we've gotten from our strategic plan, where we left off with the strategic plan, and embed this, these concepts also into that, so I am working with them to, to establish in terms of, to continue some of that work. But I think that it's important that we have district goals. Last year, we really didn't have a specific district goal on it, and that was a concern.
Oh, in our strategic plan.
Other than the strategic plan laws, which, which in, in themselves were dated because of COVID and the individual legal. So that, that was part of, part of the issue there, so we will revisit that as well. But I think that when you look at the goals, these goals are, are, you know, we talked about those before, and I've made, I've made them measurable, more measurable. I hope, thank you, some support from the old district team on that, Mr. Matt and Eleanor on that. So, I just want to bring that up as well.
I really appreciate the experience.
Well, motion to adopt the district goals, check, motion Mrs. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Mr. Peters, any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And B is looking at a resolution authorizing a change to the term of the office for board members of the seventh school district. We've got some specifics we'd like to see changed to three years. We have three year terms, and we'll work out with our, our years and so on. We've checked with NISBA, we've checked on the state, we've checked with our local districts, and then they'll lead to this. We have a motion?
Move.
Motion, Mrs. Graves, second. Second, Mr. Birber. Okay, discussion?
Um, I don't know if focus is on, in this month's long-term work with NISBA, um, there was a concern on, who said, basically, in speaking with boards recently, um, we're running response surveys that it takes about three years for more. So my concern is this, if we're gonna be reducing the term of board member, because I think it just won't affect it anymore. We're certainly have a board across the country of members who are just reaching for a, in place of efficiency and role, and a strategic role with NISBA, so that's my concern.
I think we were looking at if it were three years, people would prob, probably be more relative or want to go another three years, so the six years are ahead of time.
Because five years versus six years isn't as daunting as ten years. Because I know with me being up, I had some conversation I've been having with my family, and trying to, oh, my life to five years is a long time. After five years. First five years is bad, and the next one.
What's your?
And to remember, my friend speak also, because we do belong to NISBA, they can offer things, and we haven't brought them in a lot. We have recollected our policy, but you do have that option that we can bring in for other things, and perhaps that's something we can do to help, for like orientations, I think a lot of people understand.
Right, right. Well, and the other piece in the board officers webinar that I attended, the piece was the government, they call it government's mandate. We had started that two years ago. Once our policies are adopted, the board policies were in that, we can look back on that. But I think that's another form of clarity for new members to say, okay, now I see my role, what's the competence rule, and so on. I don't know, uh, I don't, were you on board, Mark, when we were looking at that procedure and policy? I don't think you were. So I'll send, I'll make sure I send that out. Is that the handbook?
Yeah, the handbook.
Just to, to begin, it had the pre, the policies that we have now revised, and hopefully by December, we'll have all that in place.
That's comfortable.
And it, it just gives lots of different term, you know, a new board member, take a look at this.
Gives you all the acronyms.
Yeah.
And then of course, it don't work in schools, there's a lot of acronyms.
And then there's the training, you're going to the convention, and then your new train, have you gone to the new board member training yet? Okay, online, okay. So, so some of that, you know, hesitancy to catch people up and so on.
NISBA's been very helpful.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, you know, this whole policy project, Mrs. Mason is working with them right now, finishing with her working on establishing exactly what we need for, hopefully, December.
Is there, I, I hadn't looked at it, but is there, are we able to ensure staggered terms?
I believe, I looked at the terms and discussed with our school attorney also. She feels we're in a good position right now with the way that our terms are running, so she thought it was pretty favorable.
And, and there's now, I believe I'm correct in this, there's really no way to have a scenario where like, let's say, four or five members are up at once, correct?
If, well, if that ever happened, then she said it's, it would be likely we could get through this for a few years at least anyway. And then she said we can readdress it if something happens then soon. Because as your board, remember, you can decide if someone resigns or, you know, something passed away or is terminally ill. So you have the right, do you want to put it back out for election, do you want to appoint, do you want, you know, so there's ways to, you can decide.
But it's, but it all, it always fulfills the current term, though, right? So that, so just to make that statement obvious, we're, we're.
It could be three years, this three year, way down the road could fall, though, we could start because.
Five years could fall, five years could have fallen too.
Right, exactly. And the new person coming on in May, remember, will still have to give the five years because, or the public had to vote on this.
Right, right.
So.
But if you remember, you were appointed, Scott and I were there, we lost, we lost four board members by that July meeting.
Yeah.
So there were four people gone on the seven person board with five year terms because people resigned.
Yeah.
Because. Yeah, because there were two more.
Yeah, yeah.
No, because you were appointed and you were elected, and one more was appointed right after. It was, that doesn't matter. It was like forever ago.
Yeah, I think we had a resignation and then we had regular resignations.
Because you would get a break for, for those July meetings.
Well, that's a different scenario, I guess, I'm just looking at the election.
So if you would run into the future, but she didn't see an issue right now, and she said if we do, oh, I hear you, now we can address it right then perhaps.
So that kind of addresses a little bit of what Eddie was talking about, which is if there's only ish two every year, then we're three, then there's at least a transfer of knowledge.
Right now looks a little additional if we need to.
But again, it won't take effect till next year, there's gonna be more about it. So my term and Scott's term that are up this year will still be five year terms. So that would still go wrong, the process to start.
No, if that happened, looking at those years, I had looked at that too.
So right now, we're at that check for a few years, let me stay back.
Maybe we'll attract more people, I mean.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how many times, you know, through the collection process here, for education, there's not that much interest. We had one, we had two people come through. A lot of people would give as well, that's a fine year, yeah.
I think luckily lately we haven't had as much condition, we've been very lucky.
It was, it was about three years ago, initially.
At least the reason back up that we provided to you guys last month, the research did show that the majority of states want the shorter terms.
Right, and then actually our local C B S wants the shorter term. Okay. Sorry, did we, we have a motion, did we?
And you had discussion?
Yes.
Yes, we're, we're there.
Okay.
Were we all in favor? Did I need to do a roll call?
Want to do a roll call? Well, something official, this is.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Birber?
Yes.
Mr. Robinero?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Thank you. We had our new business.
Sarah, are you okay?
Hey, hey, are you okay? I think I inhaled a dog hair, to be honest. I'm not allergic, I'm good. You just can't breathe it. Okay, senior citizens' property tax exemption. I can't choke anywhere around here, I get a little nervous.
I think you've already received some background information on this. Included in this section was a bar graph that I provided you. But just as a general explanation, there is a senior citizens exemption currently in place. Your state field property tax law does provide school districts as well, and municipalities with the option of providing an exemption for seniors that are generally fifty-five years or older. This particular exemption is an exemption of fifty percent exemption, and it allows school districts, cities, towns, and villages to set maximums based on income. And that income figure can be between three thousand and twenty-nine thousand. So if you have established an income maximum of twenty-nine thousand, which is the maximum level. If the individual property owner had, you know, less, minimum of less than twenty-nine thousand, they would receive a fifty percent exemption if they were of age, of an age over sixty-five. There is also an opportunity to have a sliding scale, and this is outlined, and they had, I provided. In addition, I did expand this, I think there was some mention of disability limited income exemption as well. And you can read here that districts can establish a similar maximum income limit between three thousand and twenty-six thousand. And again, there is a sliding scale. This is in addition to STAR. So STAR and veteran's exemption is, for example, also in play. With regards to the bar graph that I provided, let me just quickly step through that. That was a comparative review and comparison to where we have established. We currently have the senior citizens exemption established for our district. As I indicated, the maximum amount of income that is established would be twenty-nine thousand. Our current income level is established at twenty-four thousand. Other comparative schools in our area, to give you an idea, we're in the middle income area. Osable currently is at twenty-nine thousand, Saranac is at twenty-six four, Beakentown is at twenty-six thousand, and our Northern Adirondack is at twenty thousand, and CC is at sixteen-five, and Shaysie is at sixteen thousand. We revisited this very issue back in two thousand and three, and at that time, we increased it from the value of twenty thousand five hundred to the current level of twenty-four thousand. Other school districts revisited this number some more recently. For example, Osable, who has the highest maximum level of taxable of twenty-nine thousand, established that in December fifteenth of twenty-one. Also, Saranac also has relative to high at twenty-six four, visited, revisited that order in twenty-one teen. And Beakentown at twenty-six thousand, revisited that in two thousand and seven. Northern Adirondack, despite the level of twenty thousand, did revisit that in twenty-twenty. They went up from ten thousand to the current level of twenty thousand. With regards to disability and limited income exemption, I only found two school districts in Shaysie that had that. That was Peru at the current level of twenty-four thousand, and Osable Valley at the current level of twenty thousand five hundred. I could not find those exemptions available in other school districts in the area. To give you an idea of the impact, because this wouldn't be an exemption that would be picked up by the state, this would be simply shifting the burden of the tax to those who are not exempt. I outlined a graph at the bottom. If we withdrew both of these exemptions, in other words, dissolved both, which I'm not at all recommending that we do, but if we eliminated both of these exemptions, the total impact by doing so, which would remove a little over seven million, three, four hundred thousand dollars worth of property, added that back into taxable property, would decrease the tax rates for everyone in this school district by approximately fifteen cents, twelve to fifteen cents per thousand. So you can see that the kind of impact that exemption has overall. So I guess the point would be that, you know, even if you increased it, you know, to the maximum of twenty-nine thousand, overall impact on tax rates would not be that great. Now approximately a hundred and one individuals in the school district taking advantage of the senior citizens exemption, and approximately twenty-five individuals taking advantage of the disability and limited income exemption. Twenty-two school year. This is not something that the board needs to easily decide. Just closing out this year's tax collections. But it certainly will be something that we would want to be considering, you know, in the late winter or early spring for action if you so desire. We, in the prior years, we did consider a better exemption for reasons to shift the herd dollars to decide not to be personal.
Quick question, please. So you're saying we can postpone this from January to February? However, we don't need the December first deadline. These same folks that were impacted this year are going to be impacted next year, and we don't take action this early before December first, or on December first? Because that's information obviously for taxes. So what is it? I just wanted to clarify this real hard.
I thought school tax bills came out.
Well, I was informed, I was informed that we as a board would have to do something by December fourth to have an effective projection. And if that's the case, I want the board to see that we get something by December first. So these same people, taxpayers that were affected by this.
So Mr. Cross said by December first.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and we did, we did vote in a couple of years ago, the disability and limited income one.
You're saying we don't have veterans, though?
No, we, no, we do.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's what I thought.
Okay, our veterans one is.
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand.
No, I see.
No, no, you just said.
Said we do not have a veteran.
We don't have a veteran. We have the senior disability and limited income.
This district hasn't done it since two thousand and three, correct?
Uh, we did the disability and limited income one, when?
Both actions were done, adjusted disability and limited income exemption in two thousand and three October, and you increased the, the senior exemption in November of two thousand and three.
The veterans, the veterans one, uh, there's one from the state, though, on veterans, isn't it? Is it for property?
We resisted that several years ago.
Right, I know, but isn't there still one, veterans one from, on property tax, not school tax, on, on property tax? That comes from the town, not us, yeah. STAR, anybody who submitted their application for STAR, and now enhanced STAR, the income limit next year for enhanced STAR is ninety-three thousand two hundred dollars. That's what I just ran. I couldn't believe it was up that high, but, so enhanced STAR is right, right up there too.
So, in, in an effort to not be, not be behind the block, is this something that you'd like us to, like, do further research, be able to be prepared that we can do in the November meeting?
I would like to see something for the members, meaning we can vote on.
Right.
And I also like to sign the skill, so I want something in place to make sure that our seniors, those people. I want something in place to make sure that our seniors and those people that fall through the cracks by a hundred dollars or ten dollars are not burdened because they got an increase in their social security by fifteen dollars. When we haven't addressed this since two thousand and three. So this needs to be addressed now, and we have to replace, my understanding, by December first, so that those same folks are not affected by it next September.
Okay, so.
So I would like to see something concrete that you can vote for in November, so we can go down. Of course, I don't have the discussion with the other board members, but I personally like this sliding scale, whether we can increase the dollar amounts on that scale.
I would like to see the slide scales well, but I just would like to know the impact is.
Right, because if we're shifting, we're still shifting a burden.
We're shifting the burden back to other people.
Jan, I applied some information. Essentially, like looking at the group for this year, I mean, there are, there are folks who, you know, six hundred dollars, which is gone completely. And they're going to be interested in this option.
Right.
That, I mean, no matter what you set it at, that will always be the case.
Well, so on a sliding scale, we'll gradually reduce that. And then over time, so it's not a sudden change. The total, the total amount of monies for Peru impacted this year was ten thousand dollars, ten thousand, three hundred dollars, I think. And so the total, you know, additional burdens you can tax payers, if spent deeply, with three dollars and no cents. Like not, not per thousand, but literally the entire arsenal, three dollars and no cents.
But I think we should do a bill. I think we owe to the taxpayers to just do our due diligence to check those numbers based on our, I mean, we're going off of the, you know, sure as crap, however.
So like this is, it's not, we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars being taken since the current issue.
No, you can see by that diagram, if you remove the whole exception.
It was, it was a link in your board agenda. It was a link in the board agenda. Like you said, it's maybe it's fifteen cents per thousand. But I think if, if we put this, here's what, you know, like you said, here's what it is optimal of twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars.
But if we're doing.
If you do sliding scale, that's.
Sliding scale will move it from the twenty, it'll, it'll go, you know, it'll go to forty to thirty-five down to five percent.
But if we're doing a sliding scale, again, we're also increasing the amount of money that do take advantage. So I just think that, I don't disagree, I'd like to see it in November, but I'd like to see what the actual full impact is if we were to take maximum of, maximum and sliding scale for both.
Yeah.
What is that going to be? Because we're, again, anytime we shift the burden, especially in this economy, there's a burden on the people who are making the least, I get that. But we're also asking other taxpayers, if we're asking them to give up three dollars and fifty cents, that's one thing. If we're asking them to give up fifty dollars or sixty, you know, that might make or break those other people that aren't going to. So I think we just, I, I would just like to see the numbers adjusted to diligence.
Yes, twenty-nine, you know, the maximum figure, twenty-nine.
But at least something come to us, because say we did our due diligence.
And then make the sliding scale on both. Right. At the impact.
Okay, but I do, I do agree, I'd like to see an actionable item in November.
So we'll research the, we'll research the December first deadline. We will research, we will share a sliding scale and also the maximum, the impact.
For the November, we will not be.
So we can repair a motion for the board for the sliding scale for the November.
Yes, please. Yes, please. Yes?
Versus the.
I think that's the only one we need to want, assuming we go for the twenty-nine sliding scale.
I mean, you might as well go for the sliding scale.
Right.
Right.
But, and, and I think there's a concern out there. I mean, when you take a look at thirty-nine thousand or thirty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars as your salary, as your income, any, any type of help is. As I said, the enhanced, if we take a look at the enhanced one, the enhanced one is amazing, what that does, I couldn't believe that.
Well, by having a sliding scale, I have to choose.
Yeah, yeah, right. It's not a hard investment. Right, right. I think we just, we look at these two right at this point. And the other thing too is evidently Mr. Cross has said nobody has contacted him. I don't know if you've talked to Mr. Cross in the real property act. He sent an email, I, somehow I did not get the email, but Scott showed it to me. And then he sent it to all the board members, and Eddie had forwarded it to Scott and myself.
Mr. Cross says he went on September four, you're ten thirty in the week, addressed to all the board members, all of our regional addresses, if you're correct. He hadn't heard anything from us. I talked to him, Mr. Webber, he talked to him, he explained to me the situation, explained, yeah, we'll just discuss it for you. We as a board, we're the ones who are responsible for the budget, not Mr. Randy, Randy does a great job of preparing for us. Ultimately, it's our decision to go on the budget and present it. So I believe that's why, you know, he contacted us as board members and not Mr. Seb or Mr. Storm. I can't speak for him, but I mean, we were all included as board, and that, and that would be so.
Well, now we know about it, and that we can address it.
And I don't know why someone else didn't get it, someone else didn't get it.
We, we know now, figured out November, that's only three weeks.
But maybe contact with him to.
November eighth, I think, is the next one.
Do we want to?
Yeah, so it's not that far away.
Not, I'm not in November, we want to collect transportation or military protection. Military exemptions, we type out like this is, this is for senior citizens and disabilities, or the paramalegalism exemption.
I think we need more time on.
That's what I'm saying, like, that's not ready for.
No, we can do these two, get some more information on veterans. We checked on veterans before.
Might be time to revisit it.
But I think the veterans is also on property tax. I think they're going to get on their property tax, so those are the questions.
So to be clear, you're not asking for us to look at the veterans now?
No, no, let's not mix it, let's just do these.
This is the priority during here.
These two are the priority, we can gather more information later on on the veterans one.
Can we have like follow-up on it at some other point? Like it's, maybe if it's not ready for that, yeah, the same, but make it sure it ends up on the agenda at some point.
This is going to be the joint, we have to go with this one, some person.
No, that's fine. Right? My left is a thing.
So you are kind of, we will need to vote motion second on seventeen A, but you now are, will need a motion second to add a seventeen C. If you have veterans.
No, no, we're not doing, no, no. We need more information, no.
Yeah, so you address it in the future, so that's, that's kind of preventing you.
No, no, okay. No. Let's just take your notes right now. So we can, okay, let's, no, let's just take your.
Clarify, so if we don't put it on, we can't talk about it later?
Yes.
Wait, what?
You can, but we don't have, we don't have this.
Okay, that's fine, as long as we can talk about it later.
Someone does accept that.
That's one step at a time.
But you can, you can message with various, the president's saying that you would like the future, I don't want.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, that's fine. We need to find, we also need to find out. I think the state or the town does something, veterans discount, I mean, if that's happening in the town, you know, I believe that was happening. So let's get more information on that. Who gets it and what, so that we don't duplicate things and put a burden on other people? Because of veterans, I don't think you have a limit, just saying, I don't think there's an income limit. All right, book that. Okay, so right now, we don't need any action.
Uh, motion second to receive task, Mr. Trump, two five one, from Mr. Seb, two five one. Make sure we're next, and an action item involving a sliding scale.
Yeah, senior and.
I will make that motion.
Mr. Peters, second, Mr. Thurman, all favor, five.
Do you want to just for seniors if you are?
The disability, both of them want you here.
The thing on the face of it.
Okay. The timeline salary range for successor school business official? There was no salary range on there, right?
It was just a, a schedule. I'm not going down, but that's something that we can, we can discuss, and that's true here. Uh, we want to go about that, we could do it in researching the comps. Yeah, because it's going to depend on also what you're, what we're, which, which habit we're going to go down. Right, because there's two different wage.
We could be either or, right?
We could be either or.
But they, they pay differently based on the certification that they.
So, um, I mean, we can do that way.
I think we owe, I think we need to adhere to our salary study and make sure that we're looking at comps. And stay within whatever range is comparable to the position that they're applying for in the certification.
I'll, so we like to also reach out to the superintendents and make sure that we're.
Get rid of.
Check mid-range.
Yeah, yeah. The timeline was fine.
Yeah, I have come after the timeline, that's fair.
And the description was fine.
Okay.
And then it's a, just a, this, you know, having you look into.
I think it's very interesting, as much as Randy does, and we can fit his like job description into a little pair. I don't think that's quite right.
We have a motion to confirm the timeline, and the, it's about the salary range with the description for the business official, and to have Mr. Storm review the salaries with the other CSOs. What is in the area, is that a motion?
So.
Motion, Mrs. Graves, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're opposed, motion carried. Do we have any public comment?
We send an hour.
There should be a clipboard right over there.
Do you want the table?
Right at the podium.
Right on the table.
You don't even have walk cards, right?
I'm asking. Well, it was three to nothing.
Anything on the soccer team? Seven, one, something missing, actually, seven, one, us.
Is it done though?
It was not, last I heard.
How much time is left?
It's got to be over now.
Girls or boys?
Boys.
Like Sarah.
They got first.
Okay, I need to run a field. Tell us your name and, you have to tell me, a comment for a discussion.
Getting into the Prue Board of Education Administrator and Leadership Team. I am Stephanie Boswell Davies, a mother of three children who attend Pre-Central School. Spencer, a sophomore, Sawyer, a seventh grader, and Annabelle, a fourth grader. As an alumni at Prue Central School, class of nineteen ninety-six, I remember it was a big deal if someone pulled the fire alarm and we had to exit the building in below zero temperatures and stay outside until we received the alert fare from the Prue Fire Department. After graduation, the pulling of the fire alarms became bomb threats. And now today, as we see way too often, school shootings. On April twentieth nineteen ninety-nine, March twenty-first, two thousand and five, October second, two thousand and six, April sixteenth, two thousand and seven, and April second, two thousand and twelve, December fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. Several more, and most recently, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, to name a few. Does anyone know what these dates represent? These are just some dates that parents will never forget. Dates that parents might have dropped their children off at school. Dates their children got on the bus to head to school for the very last time. Dates the parents last saw their children alive. Dates they can no longer tuck their children in at night. Dates they will never be able to see their children play their favorite sporting event. Dates they will never hear their children's voice again. Dates they will no longer be able to celebrate birthdays. Dates that are embedded in these parents' minds as long as they are alive. And just this year, there have been a total of twenty-seven school shootings. Nine hundred and forty-eight school shootings at Sandy Hook Elementary School in December twenty-twelve. School shootings are now returned to pre-COVID levels and by some accounts have increased. The percentage of active shooter incidents by school level are fifty-nine percent for high school, twenty-one percent for middle school, junior high. Sixth grade to twelfth grade is fourteen percent, they're combined. Or elementary school K eight through twelve or eighth grade is three percent and others three percent. Prue's a small rural town known for their apples and farms, but Prue is not the town we all grew up as our world is not the same as when we were our children's age. Why am I here today? Why am I bringing this up? We live in a crazy world, we are never safe, despite us wanting to feel we are safe in our small hometown. In fact, my husband, our children's father, is BCI of the New York State Police. While on patrol, he was called to a residence here in Peru where my husband Sean arrested an individual. Days later, there was a knock on our front door. Living in our small village, I answered the front door not thinking twice. But to realize the individual at our front door was the same individual my husband arrested days prior. He showed up to our home asking if Trupor Davies lived here and if he was home with my children by my side. Just this year, there have been two murders in our immediate community. My husband was actively involved in the investigation with the first murder. The second murder, Monique, who was a victim of domestic violence, she was a high school classmate of my husband's, who had reached out to my husband and had been actively talking to him about her situation with her ex-husband, or ex-boyfriend, who ended up murdering her a couple of weeks later. Why am I mentioning this? With the proposed code of conduct changed, the electronic device policy grades six through eight, which is not currently posted on the school website, and after asking Mr. Manchester for a copy, it was sent to me via Parent Square. If states propose code of conduct. Our son Sawyer, a seventh grader, had his phone in his pocket. Sawyer was not on his phone, it was not going off, and he was not being disruptive with it at all. But due to the fact that it was in his pocket, he was given two referrals from two separate occasions. Most recently, he had to leave the phone in the middle school office for five days. I do not agree with this. And if a student is not being disruptive with their phone, it is not, and it's just in their pocket, then why are they not allowed to have their phone? And I can assure you, our children will return, can you, sorry. Can you ensure our children will return home every afternoon after school? Can you ensure the safety of our children while in school? We would like to say yes, but in reality, you know this is impossible. In fact, after the last school shooting in Texas on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, the morning of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, at seven twenty-one, as I was dropping our children off at the Prue Middle School cafeteria doors, the doors were propped open with no staff member at the door, and I do have photos of it. Prop doors is the main port of entry for school shootings, and on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, only seven days after a deadly shooting in Texas, Prue Central School had a door propped open as the children were walking into the school that morning. Prue School failed our children that day. I pray to God this will never happen in our small town. But if you, excuse me, but if it was ever to happen, these children need their phones to call their parents so the parents can hear their voice for possibly being the last time. So the children can call nine-one-one as well to let them know where they are, provide any information to law enforcement. And so the children can look at the pictures of their family or pets on their phones, and because who knows? That might be the last memory in their family. How would you, Prue Board of Education Administration and Leadership Team of Prue Central School sleep at night knowing what if? What if the parents could not say I love you one last time on their phones? What if the children had their phones to take a last selfie that the parents would always have? What if they had their phones so they could receive that last phone call or text message? What if? Because you know until it is too late. Oftentimes, both parents are working, or they leave the house before their children are up to, sorry. Oftentimes, both parents are working, or they leave the house before their children are up for school. Or even, my husband is in Albany for work, Monday afternoon to Friday. So if our children do not see their father until Friday, what if something was to happen to them? Or even my husband, and it has already been four days since they have last seen their father. They don't have their phone to call him or send him a quick message saying I love you one last time? Because the code of conduct says they're not allowed to have their phones for students in grades six through eight. What if, because you just never know, what, why can't they have them in their pocket when they're off and not disruptive? Because you never know.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Second, Mrs. Mitchell?
Nobody's second.
All in favor? Thank you.